We're going to get started. This is our staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, April 22, 2025. The first, oh, let's do introductions first, starting with Kristi.
Kristi Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Lesley Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
I'm Commissioner Denise Dreehouse. Welcome to everybody. All right, our first item is our Earth Day proclamation and presentation. And so Brad Johnson is here. He's the Director of Environmental Services. Brad, why don't we do the presentation first and then we will go into the proclamation?
Sounds great.
Happy Earth Day to everyone.
Yes. I will be brief, but it is a very important day. And I'm actually very honored to be here speaking on behalf of civil servants, not only in Hamilton County, but across the country. That honor today and the work that we do. So, thank you for having me here. And I will be brief, but I just wanted to make sure I highlighted a few of the things that we do here in Hamilton County. So again, I'm the Director of Hamilton County Environmental Services, which I know all of you are aware, but I'll mention it for the public, which includes the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency and Hamilton County Resource, which is a solid waste district. But also wanted to mention, we have so many other departments that share this mission with us. So obviously, Hamilton County Facilities, Hamilton County Planning and Development, and then Public Health, Engineers Office, and Hamilton County Conservation. There are so many things that we do, we share in this mission. So I wanted to make sure I thank them as well, because these will just kind of highlight some of the activities that we do in Environmental Services. So as you know, we actually have 18 monitoring sites throughout. We do five counties, not just Hamilton County. We also do Butler, Claremont, Warren, and Clinton Counties. And so for those sites, we're actually monitoring for ambient air quality standards. And, you know, I'm not going to go through all the technicalities and the nuts and bolts of it, but there's, these are the primary pollutants that we look at through the federal EPA. And to kind of give you an idea of how much progress we've made, since some of these go back to the eighties, as you can see here, so carbon monoxide and nitrogen dioxide, you can see the green line represents the standard. You can see we've been well below that, and you can see that trend, how we've been dropping those numbers significantly over the years. Now, a couple of areas that we've talked about, I'll go back a slide here, where we do struggle a little bit because of our geography and the geology that we have here in this area, being in a natural valley. A lot of people don't realize, but we do struggle with particle pollution, or SOOT, as it used to be called. And we also struggle with ozone in the summer season. So we've, I've been here and talked about that. That's when the sun comes out, it essentially creates like a, I call it a cake that you don't want to bake, where once you get all these ingredients together, it actually produces ground ozone, which is an irritant, and we definitely want to reduce that. So you can see, while we're right at the standard, and we are technically meeting, we have been struggling. And so as those standards ratchet down over the years, that is something that we continue to struggle with. But we have, as you can see, we've made significant gains in several decades. This kind of is just a different graph to kind of show you the successes, to go back to the first two there, ozone in particular. You can see the, to the left, the lighter, the turquoise color, that's how much progress we've made compared to the, compared to the national standard. So you can see, we've done substantially better than those areas, which is great, because those are where we struggle. And you can see, we pretty much align with the, the other three pollutants with the rest of the country. On a waste standpoint, Commissioner Dreehouse, I know you are front and center on our solid waste district with this, so you're very intimate with these numbers, but we continue to be the, the best urban county in Ohio, and very proud to say that. And you can see the trend line there. There's been some peaks and valleys, and I know Administrator Ludo, he used to be the solid waste manager, he can speak to this back in early 2000s, obviously back in '07, '08, in that timeframe, we had the, the recession. And, but overall, you can see those numbers have been increasing. And the other thing that I wanted to highlight there is, you can see, we're well above the standard, the state goal. Some of the other things, just to kind of highlight, we continue to do the backyard composting programs, which reduces the amount of waste going to the landfills. We're seeing a lot of significant people getting into these. And the nice thing is, we used to do events, which is that photo down there, but now we've been selling so many, we actually have those available pretty much year-round. And our partners too, at Conservation, I just spoke with Sarah Ferring, the Executive Director there, rain barrels, she's doing the same thing. So if people want rain barrels year-round, they can get rain barrels. In fact, I'm going to go ahead and get a second one. I just put one at my house. Yard trimmings drop off, these just started back in March, so these are back open. And the exciting news we have here, not only are they open on the weekends, but if you live on the east side at Bezak, they actually are open during the week now too, which is a great service that we have, that we offer. Five One Three Green Certification, I've talked about this in the past, but we created this program to actually acknowledge and make sure there is a program out there to show that we honor our businesses and schools and other organizations that do sustainability efforts and reduce waste. And last year, we actually certified another 19 facilities, including a school. So we're super proud of that program. Wasted food stops with us, and I wanted to thank specifically Commissioner Summerau-Dumas for this. I know she's been a spearhead on this. Thank you. Obviously, Commissioner Dreehouse has been a part of this with the Solid Waste Committee, and I know Commissioner Reese has supported this as well. We've done a lot in this sector, and this benefits not only us, it benefits the food banks here in the greater Cincinnati area. And you can see, last year, I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but last year, I think the biggest thing to see here is we diverted 9,000 tons of food. They were rescued with our partners in 2024. So fantastic work there. Tony Staubach is the spearhead there. I know most of you know Tony now, he's fantastic. And the other thing, and I know you're very familiar with this, because these go through you and they go through the approval process, but we have several green efforts for grants that we fund. So a lot of those are waste innovation grants, where we provide seed money, so to speak, to get these new programs up and going. And we also have pastor grants that we work with Ohio EPA on. We also, unfortunately, you know, there are still some people out there that, where we do have to pull out the enforcement stick. So this program started back in 18, continues to be successful. I know it came before the board, I think, a month or two ago to renew that, so thank you for renewing that. But that has been a great partnership with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. And something else I just wanted to kind of throw out there, in this age of social media, how we continue to find success. Last year, you can see, we had a huge jump in our YouTube views, and a lot of that goes to, going back to the Five One Three Green Certification. One of the things that we started to do is we created, and I'm going to kind of show my age here, YouTube Shorts and Instagram Reels. Those are, you know, my kids know what they are, but we implemented those last year, and you can see our numbers jumped substantially. What it does is it highlights a lot of those businesses, and organically, it actually, they send it out to their friends, and then it gets more and more highlights and people looking at it. So that's just a quick view. Wanted to thank you all for acknowledging Earth Day. It is a very, very important day. I'm so happy that the federal government back in 1970 created this, because it is one day a year where we do look at the earth as not something that we can just take from, but that we give back to, and we make it a sustainable area to live and play and work for the, for the future. So, thank you for that. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you for the presentation. It is a nice reminder of, you know, this, this important work that you're doing, that your team is doing, to make sure that we all live in a place that we can breathe well, and that we're, and you're doing some really proactive things related to waste. And I know our waste is going down as it goes, as it goes to the landfill, and that that quantity is going down. So, you know, I think that's really important to note. I've got one question for you. When you talked about the air quality, air quality, I don't remember how many years ago it was, but we were down in Wynton Hills when we had a situation down there, and come to find out, it was not a toxicity issue, it was an odor issue.
Correct.
But regardless, it became a big thing. And so I noted that the trends for air quality are going in the right direction. And so to what do you attribute some of the gains that we have seen in Hamilton County over the years?
It's a perfect question, and I have a perfect answer for that. Some of it, I'm not going to take away from the federal government. I think a lot of what the federal government has done over the last couple of decades, going back to those standards again, and ratcheting those down, has helped. But I think at a local level, what has really made the difference, and it's been six years, I know, because I just started in this position six years ago with Wynton Hills, really, it's about that collaboration. Going back to that first slide, we have a fantastic staff that when we need, and we sit down with the, when I sit down with other directors and I need, say, hey, what can we do with this area? Or right now, we're working on a new air monitoring site, facilities, they go above and beyond to help us out with it. Planning and development, when we work on sustainability issues, I'll go to James Noyes and work with him. Burke with, you know, facilities, that's been fantastic. Obviously, public health. We just have a tremendous staff. And I'm telling you, the passion that I see with these folks coming out of college now is unparalleled anything I've seen. So I want, I know at the federal level right now, we've been struggling with the messaging, you know, at the top, but I can tell you here locally, things are as strong as they've ever been, and I couldn't be prouder of where we are right now.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for recognizing the team, because I'm sure it is a team effort. Thanks for your work. All right, Commissioner Summerau-Dumas.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation, Brad. And it certainly looks like we're doing what we need to do to keep that upward trajectory as it relates to improving our quality in our environment. I have one question.
Sure.
Under air quality trends, and we're going down as, as it relates to carbon and nitrogen, do you have specifics on what areas are not going down?
Yes. So, yeah, good question. So one of the areas that we've looked at is areas of lower income. Do you get hit harder? That's environmental justice, is the term you hear thrown around a lot. So we have been working with a lot of our partners to make sure we focus in on those areas. Now again, southwest Ohio is a five-county area, so I can tell you, in all of the five counties, Middletown is the area that we focus on a lot. And that actually has to do with the industrial area up there. So the good news there is, if you've not heard, they actually applied and were granted, it's, right now, it's up in the air, you may have seen in the newspaper, but I think it was a $500 million grant to upgrade their blast furnaces, to go from coal-fired to electric and hydrogen in the future. So those are areas where I see substantial improvements in the future. We still do struggle, mainly with sulfur dioxide up in the Middletown area.
Thank you for that. But specifically in Hamilton County, I look at GE and I look at Ford when I'm driving down the highway. I was wondering, do you have a list of like Lincoln Heights is high, or Sharonville is high? Would you have that list?
The good news is, here in Hamilton County, we've done several studies, and actually go back to the early 2000s, even late 90s. And while there is higher levels in some of those areas, it's still below the health standards. So we are good in those areas, but that doesn't mean that we can't continue to improve, and that's why we continue to do what we can. The other thing that we've seen is a lot of the schools in these areas have really partnered up with not only us, but with other agencies to do their own studies. So there was an area, I forget the name of the school, but they were evaluating down in the Mill Creek area.
Okay.
The Mill Creek Valley, to see what the air quality is there, because the technology's changing too. So it used to be you only had to use very expensive equipment that we're required to use, but now they make little air monitors that, while they're not as accurate, they do give us a real-time view of like, oh, maybe there is something going out there and we can go and investigate it. So we've been using those, they're called sensors, sensor data. So those have been really helpful too.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the work. Particularly around this season, I think the air quality is a big deal, because we have so many people who have a lot of issues. I have really bad issues with sinuses and just, you know, we have people who actually move out of Hamilton County when they get older, because they said just that the air quality, they can't retire and stay here. My grandmother died of asthma. So, and you look at more children having, to have inhalers now.
Yes.
My niece plays sports, and she has to have an inhaler. And my nephew, he had to have an inhaler, my older nephew. So just trying to look at that from a health perspective, because, and they're not the only ones, you go to a game and, you know, every parent's got to go in the bag because they got inhalers, and it's, it's become too normal. So I do want to keep my eye on that part of what can be done as relates to the air quality, because that is a major issue. The other thing is with the flood that we just had, and certainly that has some, possibly some implications, maybe you can talk to that, that we might need to keep our eye on.
Absolutely. So going back to the air quality issues that you brought up, you are definitely right. This time of year, obviously allergies, pollen is really big. So what that does is it agitates your upper respiratory system for people who have allergies, and then it exacerbates these pollutants that we're talking about. So the, the good news there is, we work very closely with Cincinnati Children's. We work with doctors there regarding asthma, and there've been a lot of studies done here in Cincinnati, actually get seen at a national level. And a lot of it does have to do with the particulate pollution that we were talking about. A lot of studies are showing more and more that there is an impact from those small particles that get deep into your lungs, and then it creates that hacking. So if you do have like allergies, this is a bad time of year for it. So to your point, that's why it's so critical that we not only continue to do what we do, but to improve and make things even better. Now, from a water quality standpoint, even though in my role now, that's not something I do, flooding is, obviously, it's a transporter of contaminants. So that is something that we have to be aware of when those waters come up. From a solid waste perspective, it does become an issue with the wastes and how that waste is handled. So we partner up with EMA, Nick Crosley and his team, to make sure we actually created a debris removal plan for situations like this. So we have areas staged, ready to go, and we have plans in place when that happens. If you remember the windstorm that came through back in, I think it was Ike is what it was called, back in '09, '07, in that timeframe, we had some substantial amount of waste that we had to work with Rumpke and work with some other regulation authorities to make sure we had the services that we needed for the people. So the good news is, you know, the flooding, while it's becoming more and more prevalent, is we are prepared for it.
I also want to compliment you. We had a lady come in who had a program, and I believe is, got a grant through the Inspire Program that Commissioner Dumas initiated, and we all supported. But she came in and she talked about a van that she now has, and she's partnering with you all. And I saw it on social media, this van part of it, which was, in addition to the grant, obviously, was not the van, but the van that she's able to go out and now help with fresh vegetables, and helping people to, to provide and produce those. So I wanted to compliment you on that partnership, because I think that's really good. And then also, when you talk about the food waste component, the partnership with the Five One Three Relief Bus and Food for the Soul, because that's what they're doing, taking food that, you know, people would maybe not utilize, that hasn't been used, and they cook it, and they're able to provide food at the different stops for those who need, need food at the Five One Three Relief Bus. So there's so many innovative things that you all are doing, and I just wanted to recognize that.
Yeah, thank you for bringing up the bus. I, I know that that was your initiative, so we've found a lot of success with it, getting to audiences that we may not have gotten to before, that are living in a food desert, or just simply don't have the resources. I think I just read a statistic, one in four in Cincinnati right now are food insecure, which is a problem. So I appreciate you bringing it up, and I appreciate the initiative, it really has helped what we do.
Yeah, and just to put a finer point on that, there are small grants that go out from the Solid Waste District to partner with, you know, food rescue organizations that are doing this work in the community. So again, another innovative, innovative way to try to reduce waste in our community. So kudos. All right, we are going to get to the proclamation. So this is a proclamation recognizing Earth Day. Whereas, the first Earth Day was observed in 1970 to acknowledge that individuals, governments, and corporations have a responsibility to preserve and protect our environment, and served as a catalyst for the environmentalist movement that decade by bringing attention to several causes that helped push for the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and the passage of the Clean Air Act. And whereas residents of Hamilton County first organized around air quality issues after the creation of the Smoke Abatement League founded in 1906 by the Cincinnati Women's Club, this organization pushed the city of Cincinnati to create the Office of Chief Smoke Inspector, which was the beginning of what is now Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency, a division of Hamilton County Environmental Services.
And whereas, we continue to face extraordinary challenges, including global health crises, food and water shortages, a changing climate, unpredictable extreme weather events, economic inequities, and environmental degradation. And whereas Energy Star, a branch of the US EPA, officially recognized five of Hamilton County's facilities in 2024 for their outstanding performance and energy efficiency by lowering energy costs and waste, as well as helping to prevent the release of unnecessary greenhouse gases. And whereas, Hamilton County supports local waste reduction and sustainability initiatives by offering a range of grant opportunities for communities, nonprofits, businesses, and academic institutions pursuing innovative environmental solutions.
And whereas, Hamilton County Resources, formerly the Solid Waste District, has implemented comprehensive waste reduction strategies, including expanding cycling, recycling programs and composting initiatives with, which divert material on landfills and support the development of a circular economy. Whereas, Hamilton County Resource offers the Five One Three Green Workplace Certification Program, recognizing and encouraging sustainability efforts among businesses, restaurants, retail establishments, and schools across the county. And whereas, Hamilton County promotes waste reduction through robust education and outreach efforts that focus on recycling, composting, natural resources, food waste, and conservation, providing essential resources to schools and local organizations, and inspiring the next generation of environmental stewards.
And now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby proclaim April 22, 2025, as Earth Day in all of Hamilton County. So before we come down and take a photo with you, I'm gonna, I think Jeff would like to have a few words as the former director of the.
No, I just wanted to, thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to thank Brad for being here today, and just thank all of his staff at Environmental Services, and as he so elegantly, eloquently mentioned, all the other staff and all the departments across the county who do the work of the environment on a day-in, day-out basis. We all know Environmental Services, but you have the Soil and Water Conservation District, Planning and Development, as Brad mentioned, you've got the Metropolitan Sewer District, Parks, Public Health, all of these departments that are doing work every single day. When Bridgette and I do the onboarding with employees on an every-other-week basis, we talk about the fact that there are some jobs, like the job that I get to do, or that Bridgette does, where every day you're working on something different. And it's just so humbling, these people who, every single day, they get out of bed, and they know they're going to work for one specific purpose. And in this case, they get to go to work every single day, knowing that they're going to make this community a better place to live, and a better environment in which to live. So I just wanted to thank every employee who's doing this kind of work in the county, and throughout the country, as a matter of fact. And I, I did have to note with some degree of horror, Brad, that as you talked about the priority pollutants all going down, I, I cross-referenced that to when I got to Environmental Services, and there was actually a big spike that year. So I don't know if that.
I'm sure had nothing to do with.
So congratulations to you for keeping that.
Isn't it true that then Holly took over?
I did look at.
And things started to go down.
I did look at, I did look at Holly, and it started to go back down again. Anyway, thank you.
Sure thing. All right, we're coming around for a photo. Sorry, last one. Please give our congratulations for the team for all the progress. All right, our next item is related to Paycor Stadium renovations. It is about an MOU, and I know Jeff is going to take us through this conversation.
Thank you, Commissioners. I do have a brief presentation for you, Kristi, if you want to load that up, if it's working. So again, thank you. As the, as the board is aware, we are currently in negotiations with, with the Bengals on a new agreement for Paycor Stadium. I have a few things to report today, and an item for the board's consideration. First, I, sorry, Commissioner.
I noticed you said we're currently in negotiations. But we're currently in discussions, which is kind of a different spin on it.
I think we're having both discussions and negotiations, perhaps.
So we can, I'm happy to use the word discussion for the purpose of the, of the presentation. But we, I do have some progress to, to report today. As, as I said, we're, we're currently working with the team on, on a comprehensive agreement related to various terms, business terms around a comprehensive agreement and lease at the stadium. We've also worked with the team over the past several months to refine the renovation program that we had discussed previously with the board, and I know the board is aware of this, as we, as was initially reported, a $1.3 billion project. We have worked cooperatively with the team to refine that, that, the scale of that project from a $1.3 billion project to a project that is more in the range of 830 million over four different phases. That is roughly one-third the cost of what we are seeing new stadiums throughout the country being constructed for. And all of this, of course, is pending the acquisition of, of appropriate funding sources. So, and we've also, as the board is aware, partnered with the team on a $350 million request to the state of Ohio. We're now working through that process within the Senate, which advances the board's goal of ensuring that we have equitable funding, equitable funding contributions from multiple sources as we look to, to renovate Paycor Stadium. So today, I want to walk the board through a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, for your consideration, designed to enable us to continue lease negotiations with the team while we simultaneously work to secure other funding sources and make the most of the NFL funding sources, that NFL loan funding sources that the team has received. I think it's important to note that presuming we do finalize a, a long-term agreement with the team, that many of the projects that would be encompassed in a renovation program that would kick off in 2026 have very long lead times, long design procurement lead times. So while we're in, in discussions with the team, we want to ensure that you, as we are, as we are having those discussions, that we are doing those things that are necessary so that we can seamlessly then enter into construction in 2026 without delay. So the memorandum of understanding that I present to the board for your consideration would identify the team and the county's respective responsibilities for Phase One of the renovation program, which would go, which again, would kick off in 2026. Given the associated lead times, provide that the team and the county will continue the initial planning and procurement activities associated with these projects in 2025, with the goal of implementing them in 2026. The MOU would also provide that the team in the county will continue to strive for a comprehensive agreement by June 30, 2025, which as the board is aware, is the date that the team has to exercise a two-year extension on their current lease. But the MOU also would provide a safety valve in here as well. And as I get to the, into the meat of what the Phase One projects would entail, there's also a safety valve that would be in the MOU that would say that if we do not reach a comprehensive agreement, that both sides, county or the team, would be able to reduce or terminate their respective commitments related to Phase One of these projects, so that we weren't locked into doing something without there being a long-term commitment associated with it. The, the MOU also reiterates that, some general language about this being. The MOU also reiterates that, some general language about this being, working collaboratively, defining our goal of an equitable funding, equitable funding sources, and also reiterate some timing goals as well. So in terms of the, of Phase One, as we continue to advance talks with the team, the county and the team under this MOU would make commitments to advance the renovation program in 2026 through team and county-funded projects. So the team-funded project is roughly $120 million, and that is comprised of team equity and NFL loan funding that would entail renovation of the East and West Club Lounges, all 132 suites in the stadium, concessions throughout the stadium, as well as upgrading and enhancing the plaza areas, entryways, and concourses at the stadium. And again, that's roughly $120 million. The county-funded projects that would ensue in 2026 would be, first of all, many projects that are designed to leverage the team's investment, but those would entail primarily work on the vertical transportation and escalators in the East and West Club Lounges, the elevators in those areas, electrical and power code upgrades to make sure that these renovations could move forward, given the aging status of a lot of the electrical work in the current stadium, some suite seat replacements, as well as some glass and glazing refurbishment in these areas. It would also include the control room associated with the Jungle Vision system, which is, for those who may be watching at home, really the brains of what makes all the audiovisual technology throughout the stadium possible. So again, these would be the 2026 projects as defined between the team and the county, presuming that we are able to get to a comprehensive agreement. What the MOU says is that both parties would agree to advance the design, engineering, and pre-construction work associated with these projects, as well as some limited equipment procurement starting in 2025. Again, just to make sure that as we are moving forward, trying to get to a comprehensive lease agreement with the team, that we are doing those things in the interim, that make sure that as we get to 2026, we are ready to initiate a comprehensive renovation program and that we are not delayed by the fact that we waited for that pre-construction design work until after we had the final agreement complete. So again, just to double down on this, I already mentioned what the projects were. Again, the team-funded projects would be the East and West Club Lounge renovation, renovation of the suites at all stadium levels, concession improvements throughout the stadium, and improvements to the concourses, plazas, entryways at the stadium. The county projects would include the vertical transportation improvements, electrical power and code upgrades, elevator refurbishment, suite seats, glazing, and the control room associated with the Jungle Vision system. I think it's important, an important component of the MOU is the fact that the team has, in fact, secured loan funding from the NFL through the NFL's G5 program. And to my knowledge, that is the first time in the history of the stadium that NFL financing, NFL league financing has been secured to make meaningful renovation improvements within Paycor Stadium. So I want to thank the Board for your leadership on that, I want to thank the team for its acquisition of those dollars. But I think it's important to note that there are timelines associated with those loan dollars, and if, if in fact, we are not able to implement those projects in 2026 effectively, that funding could be lost or subsequently reduced. We want to make sure that, or significantly, I'm sorry, significantly reduced. We want to make sure that we are leveraging those dollars as effectively as we can. So in summary, Commissioners, and I wanted to make this brief to make sure you have as much time for your questions as possible. But in summary, the memorandum of understanding that has been presented to you provides a way for the county and the team to continue to advance design and engineering and pre-construction work for these long-term, long-lead-time projects while we are concurrently working towards a long-term agreement with the team, while we're securing state funding, and to make sure that we leverage that NFL loan funding to the most efficient degree possible while we still work on finding our path to a comprehensive agreement with the team, with the goal of that occurring by the end of June of 2025. So Commissioners, again, I wanted to keep this short to provide you the opportunity for questions. I do want to thank Roger Friedman is here, along with Tom Gabelman and Chris Brubaker. Tom has been coordinating the efforts of our design-build team on this, on specific projects. So if there's specific technical questions about projects and what they entail, et cetera, I'm going to defer to Tom on that, but I'm happy to open it up for any questions, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for the overview. I do want to highlight what you said there at the very end. So this is part of the work that we are doing related to the stadium, but we are also trying to secure state funding. We're, we've got the MOU in front of us today. We've got a comprehensive agreement that we're working on with a deadline of, well, technically next year, but June 30 of this year practically. So we've got a lot of balls in the air related to the stadium, to the team, to the, all the work that we're doing together. So this is just a part of the overall strategy here that we're working on to try to, you know, continue to negotiate with the Bengals and do what we can to get that stadium improved, you know, for the benefit of the taxpayers and all the priorities that we've listed out many times. So I just want to highlight a couple of things. So this $120 million is a collective amount. Is it 60 from the team and 60 from the NFL?
That's my understanding approximately.
Okay, so a collective, and as you say, the NFL has never contributed anything towards the capital in the stadium, so this is the first time for that. And the team is doing something here that is something that they've done in the recent past with a $40 million contribution to an $80 million project a couple of years ago. But these, this is increased investment from the team in the county asset, and so I am glad to see that. We've asked them to, you know, start to think about their, the partnership in that way, and this is a result, I think, of some of that forward thinking on their part, on the NFL's part, and then on the county's part. And it also helps us leverage our dollars that we are investing in to try to make sure that these dollars go as far as they can. And so, you know, I do note that the projects that the county has identified for this funding are very practical projects. It talks about vertical transportation, which, i.e., that's escalators. We've got a lot of trouble with the escalators, they break down all the time, and so we need to do a long-term comprehensive fix on that, and this is getting towards that. There's a technology upgrade here, as was said. It hits on a lot of the priorities of this Board, which we talk a lot about access for the public, we talk about safety, we talk about accessibility for other events, and making sure this facility can house other events as we move through in agreement with the Bengals. We are hopeful that we will have many, many more events, whether they're concerts or high school football games or whatever it is. But these county investments in collaboration with the team and the NFL help to get us there, and all of these dollars count towards the financial stack of $830 million. So I don't want people to think that this is outside of that amount, this is part of that amount. And so these are part of the projects that have already been identified by both the team and the county as high-priority projects. So again, you know, we've, we talked about the collaboration and moving towards a more comprehensive agreement here. I mean, in the end, that's what we're trying to do, is get a long-term agreement with the Bengals to the benefit of the taxpayers, using what funding is already there, no new taxes for anything above, but making sure that we are taking care of the county asset and making sure that asset functions in a way that's beneficial to the taxpayers of Hamilton County. So I've seen the, I've had a chance to read through the MOU, so I don't really have any questions. I do want to highlight, though, the timing element. I recognize that we are in a short timeframe here to pass this. We've had this item in front of us for a while, but we are finally getting to a point where we need to move on forwarding these funds at the same time as we work to get other funding from the state of Ohio. So that's all I have. Commissioner Summer Odomis, any comments, questions?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Jeff, appreciate it. Also want to thank all the administration and our lawyers that are working very hard on this process. We've come a long way as it relates to talking with the team and trying to get some, how can I say, partnership, collaboration. I'm looking at this MOU, and there are about seven, there are seven articles in here which are inclusive within each article, lots of information that we are committing to, this is a draft, and every article has the team, the team, the county, the team, the team. This is unheard of, if you look at the old lease that we had. Of course, this is a draft, we have not approved this. My concern is the process, and so I don't know who can answer this. So as we look at this MOU and say if we do approve the MOU, then am I to assume that the team will, it sounds like they've already agreed to this stuff in here, or we would not have put the team's name in here. So at what, at what point, once we agree, then the last page indicates a signature from the Board and a signature from the team. And then right below there, it said approved as to form. I'd like to add on their form and content if we could. So are they, is the team waiting for us to approve the MOU, and then they will, it sounds like they already agree on this because they're in here, then they will also approve the MOU, so they're waiting for us?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, appreciate the question. So yes, and my understanding is that the team has reviewed the substantive concepts that are in here and are willing to execute this, assuming the Board is, and that's why we put it in front of the Board. I didn't want to bring something to you until I knew that the team was far enough down the road in terms of the concepts as well. So if you execute it whenever that is, the team would execute it as well.
So I can assume that everything in here that has the team, the team, the team, they have already technically agreed on these things and waiting to see what, if we're going to agree on them.
That, yes, that is correct, yes.
It's a lot of commitment for the team, which is--
That's right, Commissioner. Really, since last Thursday, we've been working pretty much around the clock and through the holiday weekend with the team to work through the terms and conditions of this MOU. And as of last night, and when we transmitted the, this version that you currently have in front of you, the team had reviewed each of the provisions and approved them. So right now, they are, and they're willing to execute this as soon as the Board is ready to approve it. I will say to President Dreehouse's comment about timing, timing is very critical, as we're all aware, for two different reasons, well, actually three. One, we definitely want to move forward with what we're doing in reference to the comprehensive agreement. We're also moving forward at the same time saying we don't need to wait to advance these projects. We provide a mechanism to limit the financial risk of the county and the team, but we can move forward. And really, most importantly, we're also sending a message to the state legislature that is very strong, that the team and the county are aligned. Since last September, we had an initial vision of the master plan. This Board and the county, different than a lot of other cities have done, didn't say we're going to do 1.2 billion and it's going to be, wind up being 2.3 like Buffalo. We went the other direction and said, we're protecting the taxpayers' interest, we're going to make this stadium-centric, and it was reduced by 30% to 800 million. That's not 830 million, that's not the way things typically happen. This Board did that in collaboration with the team. That's a great message to send to the legislature to say, we are moving forward, we're aligned, we're agreed on the elements of the project, which should be in there, and we're going to continue to refine those, especially when we're trying to seek state assistance and participation.
Thank you for that. On the last page, as I mentioned earlier, how it says approved as to form--
Right.
Form means to me how it is written, and so you just said, can you add in content?
Well, that's, I would defer, I would defer to co-counsel Roger Friedman. Basically, that's required under Ohio law, that the prosecutor's office approves as to form.
As to form, Roger, Roger, if you don't get up here. Yes. So you're shaking your head. So form means content?
No, the statute requires approval as to form. We can approve as to content if we are in agreement with everything that's in the document that it's accurate. If the Commissioners want that, we can, we can add that to it.
Well, I think that was part of the problem. The first contract is that some of our people that were working with us on the lease, the previous lease, didn't say it's, anyway, I won't go back there. But what I'd like to see from the prosecutor's office, that you agree to the content of everything that's in there. How you do it, I don't, I don't know. By us signing it, we're not prosecutors, so I'd like to add that on if we could.
Statutory requirement as to form, so.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you very much. Let me just say that, first of all, just to give context, because this is a very complicated issue. We just had a presentation for Earth Day, Director Brad Johnson, and that was different. I'm wearing green and that was great. But now we're talking about an issue that is very, very complicated, an issue that taxpayers felt they got duped. And it happened 20 years ago, I wasn't even in politics. That's how long ago, and I'm tied to something that was done 20 years ago. Every time we say something, we say, we got to go to this lease from 1997. So this makes this a little different. I also want to indicate how I've had a chance to be on the Finance Committee of the city when I was Vice Mayor, Finance Committee of the state when I was a state legislator, and more importantly, was the president of the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus. So when you're in the state and you're in the minority, you're not necessarily in certain rooms, but if you're the president of the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus, you get a chance to be in the room with the governor, with the president of the Senate, with the Speaker of the House, to cut a lot of different negotiating-style deals. I want to also preference that each of us at the county commissioners today, we each run individually. We do not run as a package. We can't even talk to each other outside of the meeting, so we have to, have to, each of us have to attest to the people that elected us. Now, I just came out of an election, and I got 218,338 votes and had a chance to speak directly with voters as I was out there throughout the county, whether it was out in Anderson Township, Colrain Township, or in the city of Cincinnati, Avondale, I had to talk to them. The number-one issue was not the Bengals' lease, however, their number-one issue was the economy. They wanted to stay, they wanted to get these property taxes down, they want to hold on to their house, they want to make sure that we're here getting a deal that helps them. I want to also say that I am a Bengals fan, but there's a difference between a fan and a negotiation. And I was elected to negotiate on behalf of my clients, which are the taxpayers of Hamilton County, specifically the 218,338 that sent me here. I couldn't be here without them. I wouldn't be sitting in this room without them. So my allegiance is to the voters and the taxpayers. Now, in a negotiation, and I've been in a lot of them, when you go to the table, you don't give away everything before you get down to the nitty-gritty of a contract, a lease. In my training at Procter &amp; Gamble as a paid intern, they taught me a long time ago how to go to the table and try to get a win-win, and I'm using those tactics today. There are a couple of things that I see that's wrong with this system, nothing personal to Mr. Aludo or the lawyers, but none of them are elected. none of them are elected. So we've got all non-elected people that are in all the meetings. The commissioners were not in all the meetings. And when I'm in a negotiation, there's a lot that happens in a negotiation. One, I want to look in their eyes and see are they really, what they thinking. I want to look at their body language, because sometimes you say something, the body language tell you, okay, that's where they're trying to go. Or there may be things that, we hired somebody, and that's good, the last time they hired somebody. We don't even know who he is now. And they may go in to get just an NFL deal. However, I'm responsible, and I speak for myself, because we are individually elected. I was hired, I was elected to make sure that the voices of the taxpayers, their questions get to get answered directly in these rooms. And so I might have a question that the taxpayers want to know, but it might not come up in the legal discussion. And I don't like, I'm going to be on record, I don't like this system. Because at the end of the day, I was interviewed by someone, and they said, "Yeah, you're not in the room. Yeah, you're not the one doing the negotiation, but you're going to sign it. You have to sign it, and you got to vote on it. And then you're trapped for 20 years. The people that signed this are no longer county commissioners, and this is their names. And who are they? Betting House Dowling and Nyer, 20 years ago. Now they'll be replacing them with our names. And I've got to make sure that whatever I do, and I'm speaking just for me, I'm not speaking for the other two. It takes two votes. I can only speak for my vote. And I'm saying, when I look in this contract, I done been through it, I done read it. I mean, it's the worst, most lopsided contract in history. This is like an insurance policy. They don't make this one anymore. This is like when you got the cell phone 20 years ago. You own a package. I'm on a package right now. They want me to get off of, get a new package because they don't offer that package anymore. No one in the country offers this lease anymore. Can't get it anywhere. Can't find it anywhere. 94% on the taxpayers, 6% with the team. Now, when recommendations are made, I've got to question them because I'm not in the room. I don't know who's saying what. I don't see anybody here from the Bengals, and tell me if they're here, is the Bengals' legal counsel in the room? And we're talking for the Bengals. I'll ask again. If they're here, please raise your hand and step to the podium. Bengals counsel. Going once, going twice. But we're handed something saying, "This is what they're saying." I've not received anything from them, saying that they're for this. And we keep talking about we're together. Now, let me say that this same argument was given to us, I think a year ago, a $39 million package. They said, "If we go with this 39 billion," it was the same talking points. "If we go with this $39 million package, help them get some seats, not seats in the 300 section, but 100 and 200, will they charge more? If we would just do that package," this is what Mr. Ludo, you brought to us, "this would show the Bengals' ownership that we're wanting to work together." And I kind of bought into it. I said, "Well, you know, I want to work together." And then it was said, "If we just do this, we will be able to get to a lease." I still ain't got no lease. Then it was said, "If we could do something under that grass and get it going, that would really get ready for the season, and the Bengal ownership will know that we're serious and we can work together." Same thing we saying today. And we'll get a lease. We still ain't got no lease. I've been screaming and hollering about, "Let's get down to the lease." Now, let's talk about deadlines. The NFL, you say, to get this G5 loan, they have a deadline. Got to do it by the end of April. And so now we got to hurry up and do this. We got this event today so we can get to the NFL deadline. The state of Ohio, I've been on the Finance Committee, they got a deadline. They not going to extend past their deadline. The House had a deadline, the Senate got a deadline, they've got a deadline. Now, in here, this was written 20 years ago. We knew the deadline 20 years ago. We could have been working on a new lease for 20 years. And they're supposed to tell us if they're going to stay this year by June. And there's some rumblings that, "Well, maybe we should give them some more time." Well, the NFL ain't giving. I asked, "Can the NFL give us more time?" And they said, "No, they can't give us more time. We got to come up with the money." I said, "Can the state hold up the state budget for us and give us more time?" And, "No, the state got to pass their budget." Then we said, "We were meeting with the Speaker of the House." I wasn't in the meeting. And we brought him to town. He came to town. They said it was meeting Mr. Ludo. He said, "Go to meet. You had to present something." Came with some talking points we supposed to present to them. Then they said, "The Speaker of the House is getting ready to go on the radio," my office was told, "and our communications even put talking points for the Speaker." And guess what the talking points came out with? "Ohio Speaker, I don't support Bengals' Hamilton County $350 million request." That's what came out of it. Then, now we going to run up to the, to the State House, not myself. They going to run up there and knock a whole lot of doors and see if we can get something out the Senate. I had said over a year ago, I said, "Listen, we got to cut a deal with Cleveland." Because in my experience at the State House, they give everything up north. They don't respect us down south. I don't care if you're Republican or a Democrat. They don't respect, we always got to fight. I said, "We got to cut a deal." This over a year ago, I told you, Mr. Ludo, I told the team when I had a conversation. I said, "We might got to cut a deal and come with a package with Cincinnati and Cleveland together." But that's again, I ain't in the rooms with all these different little meetings that people having. I don't know what's being said. We went with this tax, talking about, "We going to save everybody. Let's do this sports betting tax." And the governor went with it, but the people said no. And I even said, "If they don't go with the tax, we got to, we got to switch quick." Because Cleveland comes in, and they coming in as a powerhouse. The difference with Cleveland is the ownership is going to the state on their own, saying, "We want it." The difference with Cleveland is the president of the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus is from Cleveland. They got some powerhouses that's pushing for Cleveland. Now, we come, they say, "We late." They said, "The man done shut the door, hit the gavel, done passed the budget, and now here we come running." Now, we say, "We on our way to the Senate." Now, while we're doing that, let's talk about what did the Bengals' ownership do. Last year, we got, we, nobody informed us. There was no "we." They went to the state and got something in the budget. They didn't go to the state asking for money for the stadium. They didn't go to the state saying, "Let's do a package." They went to the state to get exempt for paying sales tax on, on, on the improvements they're going to make. Now, let's go back to what is sales tax. Sales tax is how we pay for the stadium. That's what the taxpayers went. So now the taxpayers got to pay the sales tax. They don't get exempt. But the team who benefits from the sales tax, they've exempted themselves and went to the state. They could have went to the state like Cleveland did. When they were going to get the sales tax exempt, Cleveland Browns was up there trying to get a deal for their stadium. So now we look like we late to the game. What else did the team do? Well, they went to the NFL. According to our lawyers, we needed more money from the NFL. NFL giving other stadiums more money. We went and went with us, we went and said, "Well, we only need this much money." When we really need a lot more. What else happened? The NFL had a meeting. They said, "Listen, we going to let the teams bring in more money, try to take it off the taxpayers. You can do equity. You can go get investors." Our team voted no for investors, but want to be yes for the taxpayers. I'm trying to get this off the taxpayers. That's my goal. How do we get the burden? Right now, the taxpayers has all the risk. They're, they're in a bad situation, and I'm trying to help. How can we climb out of it? Taxpayers are struggling right now, trying to hold their house. And then when we do the 30% that was advertised in this deal, but never made it to the written copy, but told all these homeowners, "We going to give you a break if you go with these two stadiums." Every year, we fighting over the break. Every year. And we got it two years, but it's a fight every year. We said, "We ain't got no money." How we ain't got no money for the homeowners, but now we got money for $800 million stadium situation. I don't care if it's 800 million, 500 million, 300. How we got all this money, but we don't have nothing for the homeowners. So we got to put some skin in the game. Whether they want to go to a football game or not, they are paying for this stadium. Now, we put some nice things that we thought, that I thought was pretty good, I'm just going to talk for me, that might help us shift it. We've got nothing on that. Every time I look around, it's, "Well, wait a minute. Don't do the lease yet. Let's get this deal done. Don't do the lease yet. Let's get these seats done. Don't do the lease yet. We getting ready to start our season. We can't do it right now. And the season's getting ready to start again. We know it starts every year around the same time." So those are the questions that I have. We have to get down to the nitty gritty. And we can't speak for the team unless I hear from the team. They can come back and say, "I never said that." I don't see their signature on here. They could have signed first. No signature. Every time they bring us something, it's our signature first, and then you come back and say, "Well, you know, they, you know, they, they busy. They've got the training. They've got the draft. They got a couple of other things." But they know how to get to the State House, because they got to the State House and got that break where they don't have to pay any, any sales tax. The other thing is, every time we try something for the taxpayers, it's always met with resistance. I say, "Let's have a watch party for free." "Oh, no, the NFL, uh-uh, no, oh, no, we can't do that. No, Lord. You can pay the water bill. You can pay the rent. You can pay the gas and electric. You can pay all these bills, but we can't give you nothing." And then they say, "We got a bright idea. Let's have a watch party." But now we want to charge you. The other thing in this MOU, we're fixing up, Mr. Ludo. The escalator that goes to the Section 300 needs to be fixed. It's not in this MOU. This is everything to raise ticket prices and season tickets. We got new carpet if you in the, if you in the club level, if you're club status. We've got elevators working if you can get to the club level. But if you go to the 300, which is what citizens have been calling me about, they ain't got nothing up there. If you go to 200, the seats ain't new. You go to the 200, you can't get up there. And so I think that sends kind of a not-so-great message. So what I'm concerned about, I'll be honest with you, is that we have been dancing around, in my opinion, and I have a right to speak what my voters are saying. I'm going with my voters. Everybody, they got a right to speak with their voters. But my voters are saying, "We're dancing around, and when are you going to get to this lease that we've been trying to get to for 20 years?" Someone even got voted out of office because of the lease. The people said, "They voted for these stadiums, but when it got to the lease, it went behind the closed curtains, and they felt they got duped." And so we're trying to work so we don't have that situation. Now, we presented, I was told, Mr. Ludo, you finally did present what we were talking about. What's the response before we go spending 60 million more dollars and all of that? We are still with this, a blank. When it comes to the lease, this is where we at, in terms of commitment, is blank. So I want to say that I think we have reached out and bent over backwards, but there's just too many loose ends. And every time we come, we're à la carting our way into the hole. This is an à la carte deal. If this has something to do with the lease, then get the lease done. I don't know any landlord that's fixing up. You guys, a regular landlord right now, your lease is about to be up. They don't come in and do new carpet and painting, and they come in, a new deck on the back. They want you to sign this lease, and then I'll bring you the new carpet and the new deck and all that kind of stuff. And I think we've had ample time to deal with the lease because they already told you in 1997 that in 2025, they're going to have to tell you if they staying or what they going to do. And then it says, "Then," you have until 2026, but they told you this in 1997. So I, I think if the NFL has a deadline, we got to meet, and the state has a deadline, we have to meet. I think we need to make sure we're meeting it in the context of, "Let's get this lease done." But I wanted to explain to people how the process works, because they thinking, "We in the room with the Bengals, and we're talking across the table." And they can't understand why that wouldn't be. Our chief of staffs ain't even in the meeting. And I appreciate Mr. Ludo coming back, doing the best he can with an interpretation of what happened in the meeting. I appreciate him coming back with the Cliff Notes version of what happened in the meeting. But we don't have the transcript, because there might be something on there that I might say, "Well, wait a minute. My constituents want this or care about that." And this is not your standard thing that we do down here. This thing is a lot of implications. The other thing I wanted to say, at one point, I don't know how long they willing to give us, because that's part of, I guess, the negotiation, but I want to give some context. You know, how many years would they give with the lease and da, 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 da? And will we get a long-term lease and da, 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 da? That's what supposed to be negotiated. I told them to pull up, how much money did they get for the naming rights? And the naming rights deal, we didn't even know. But how can you negotiate? We don't even know what kind of money we talking about. They ain't open to books. Forbes got more information than we got. Forbes magazine. But because Paycor is selling the Paycheck, it became a, it became a public, because they're a public traded company. And so they found that after, you know, what, a couple of years, the name that's on the building that's paid for by the taxpayers, they got $66.7 million total. Now, what did $66 million get, hey, how many years did Paycor Paycheck get for 66 million? They got 16 years for 66 million. And we in here talking about 800 million, and we dancing around, "If we going to give them, they going to give us four, they going to go five, and they going to go to...16 years. $66 million was worth a 16-year deal. And by the way, you had to go back and double check this. It's like going to the library. Go back and double check it on here. They made sure that they were under the threshold, so the taxpayers got nothing, which could have kind of helped us bring the cost down. So I want to work together collectively with Bengal ownership on how do we help bring the cost down on the taxpayers? And, you know, I don't really want to do these things again, talking for the team. I appreciate the interpretation. I appreciate the Cliff Notes, but I got to see their representation. They've got lawyers too that should be here saying, "If it's a we thing," they should be here saying, "It's a we thing." And I just think this close to the deal, the lease expiring, I just don't know if that's the best thing to do at this time. We did it with $39 million. We didn't get a lease. We did it with the grass or whatever we did up under the grass. It didn't get us a deal. Every week, we voting on stuff. It's not getting us a lease. And I think we need to have a deadline like the NFL got a deadline, Mr. Ludo. We need a deadline like the state got a deadline. What's the date are we going to get a lease? And I think that's what the taxpayers that I represent, now, I can't speak for everybody, but what they told me, this is not Alicia Reese, I'm just their messenger. And I'm bringing the message of what they told me. I can't go anywhere, eating or whatever, without them stopping and saying, "Hey, we got to get a better, a better deal." So wanted to highlight that. And again, there's three names that will go on the front of this thing, three commissioners. And, you know, we just got to, when I saw this, we're, we're looking at the last commissioner saying, "Why didn't they do this? And why didn't they do this?" There'll be some people looking at us. "Why didn't they come up with this? Why didn't, why is this in there?" So we've got to be able to make sure this time, we're a lot more thorough. So with that, Mr. Ludo, I was hoping today you were bringing something with the lease, but instead, we got a MOU to give them some more money. And I believe it's how much, 60 million or how much we putting in?
So Commissioners, the, the total county dollars would be around 64.5. The total team would be 120. Just a bit of nuance to that. These are projects that would primarily occur in 2026. So there are some preliminary procurements that would have to happen because of the long lead time on things like escalator parts, that type of thing. So in 2025, we're probably spending in the So in twenty twenty-five, we're probably spending in the order of magnitude of several million dollars, but not the entirety of this. Most of the, most of the construction, uh, most of the expenditure work is gonna happen in twenty twenty-six. Uh, so that's a, an important point of the, of the MOU in that, to your point, Commissioner, if there is no long-term deal reached, that the MOU does include a, uh, a clause that allows both parties, uh, if we're, uh, not comfortable with where we are on the long-term deal to either, uh, terminate or reduce our, our respective responsibilities if we got to that point. Um, obviously, we're hoping to get to a, a long-term deal. But, uh, to your point about, um, uh, giving money before a deal is done, this tries to accommodate, uh, for that by saying that if we don't get that deal done, uh, there is a clause that allows us to pull back some of those commitments.
I, I would just put a counter-deal on the table. Why don't, uh, and I understand you said a hundred and twenty million, they putting in sixty and NFL's putting in sixty. NFL's put a lot in more in other areas. In fact, I think our initial, uh, run of numbers that you guys presented us, NFL needed to put in a whole lot more than sixty million dollars. However, why don't they just do the project and, uh, put in there? If they, we get a deal, then, you know, we'll reimburse you as part of the lease. Why would we say that we sign an MOU? Why don't we tell them, go ahead and do it? They've got enough money. Forbes magazine said that. They got enough money. You guys move forward it, you front-load it as we continue to work on the lease. And then if we get something, we'll reimburse you as part of the lease agreement. That to me would be a lot more and less exposure for the taxpayers. But that's where I would come from. I'm only one vote, but I, I, I represent a lot of votes, and I want to make sure that their voices are heard. But that would be something that I would have told them, y'all move on because, like you said, we don't have a lease yet in April. You got to move forward in April. Go ahead and front-load it. And then if we get a deal, then we'll, we'll, we might roll it into the existing deal. But you guys go ahead. And, uh, because since you're not unable to get a lease done by April, uh, I just find it hard that everybody else's deadlines are adhered to, respected, but our deadlines are, are not. Uh, we put the thirty-nine million. You said the same thing with thirty-nine million. These take long time and procurement. We got to get going on them, and we did. And you said, if we get going on them, we can get the lease moving. And we, we're not any closer to a lease than when we voted on the thirty-nine million dollars. And that's what makes me skeptical this time. I went with you the last two times, but I'm very skeptical this time because I don't see real progress on this lease. I know we PRing it, saying, oh, man, we're together and it looks good. We saying we together. I haven't seen anything in the news, them initiating, we're together. In fact, they were in the news initiating something else. So I, I just, uh, negotiations are tough. It's not, uh, can't we all just get along at the beginning of a negotiation? I've been in some tough ones. At the end, you say, we're together. Well, you might not be together at the beginning because it's a back and forth, and I'm sure they want to hold on to the existing deal, and we want to try to get a new deal, uh, that would be more equitable. Um, but I do want to say that, and my last thing I do want to say again, there was a big mistake not cutting the deal with Cleveland. Uh, I had to do that with the MLK exchange. Governor wanted, uh, a bridge in, uh, Cleveland. And I was president of Black Caucus, and he was having some problems casing. And he came to me, and I said, wait a minute, I'm from Cincinnati. I can help you in Cleveland, but I got to have something in Cincinnati. He said, what do you have? I said, the MLK exchange. And that's how we got our project moved up that was online to only be done in thirty-five years. They call that the fast track up at the state. That's how the MLK got done. We had to cut a deal with Cleveland because they got a lot of power, uh, up at the state, uh, for whatever reason. And, uh, I told us we should have done that, and unfortunately, we did not. Now we're in a, what they would say, a pickle. So those are my comments for this. Um, maybe you'll have some more stuff before we vote, but I just wanted to put that on the table.
Well, I would like to clarify some things here. Um, so on the point of Cleveland, Cleveland is not supportive of what is in the budget at the moment. Neither is the county of Cuyahoga. Both Chris Ronain and Mayor Bibb are against what the Haslums are doing. So I just want to be clear on that. We have talked to, I have personally talked to Chris Ronain, uh, and we have talked a number of times about doing something together. Unfortunately, the team is not with them up to the north. And so it's, unlike us, where we have been advocating together with the Bengals, they've been in the room, um, every time we've met with someone, um, that is simply not the case. In Cleveland, it's an unfortunate scenario for us because I would love nothing more than go hand-in-hand with Cuyahoga County uh, to the legislature with a similar funding scheme, but that's just not where, where we are. But it could be where we are because this is a process. Uh, and, and I'm just going to remind everyone, because I get asked all the time, well, how did we not get included in the budget? Well, the fact of the matter is, we did get included in, in the budget. It was the governor's version of the budget, and Commissioner Reese, you were the one that talked to the governor about the gaming fee and putting that in the budget for this purpose. We all thought it was a brilliant idea, um, and I thought it was a good idea because it's a user's fee, and the governor agreed, and he put it in his budget. So we were in the budget, to be clear. In the House, they took that out of the budget, and so that is no longer part of the equation, and they put the Haslums piece in the budget. So now we're on the Senate side where things will likely change again. And the point of all of this is that we have to continue to be at the table with the Bengals from southwest Ohio advocating our position to get three hundred and fifty million dollar partnership commitment from the state. We are continuing to work on that. Um, the governor doesn't like the House's idea, the House doesn't like the governor's idea. We got to come up with another idea. And so that's what we're working on. We have had executive sessions related to some of this information. Um, but the fact of the matter is that it, it's, it's up to the, the state senate at the moment. And we do have, um, two senators who, during our delegation meeting, even talked about wanting to be part of the solution, uh, and, and coming up with some different scenarios. So it's a process. We're not there yet, we're not finished yet. Um, that deadline is at the end of June, when the budget is passed. And so, uh, we are working with the folks up to the north. I'm not sure that's going to work out because they are not in concert. Uh, but we are certainly working with, um, the senators and the team to continue to advocate for, um, some kind of financial partnership here for what we're doing, for our county asset, which belongs to the taxpayers. Um, the other piece I, I just wanted to address is, um, I don't want there to be any confusion about the activity related to the lease. Um, we have engaged a national expert, as have the Bengals, and they are talking to one another. Uh, we have heard from our national expert now a couple of times. And, um, we have given him policy direction. That is, the role of elected officials is to give policy direction and have our, um, either whether they're contracted employees or, uh, employees of the county to execute on the policy directions of this commission. And we have been very clear, all three of us, on our policy direction as to where we want this lease to go. And so that work continues to be done, um, not always done in public and not always done by us because we've engaged a national consultant. Um, but we are certainly, um, continuing to work on, uh, a, a new lease with the Bengals. And, uh, this, these projects, um, are part of the conversation or the discussion, as was said, uh, with the Bengals. We, we have some things that will be good for the county asset, or it'll be good for the taxpayers. The Bengals and the NFL are, are part of the financial stack here in a way that they haven't been in the past. And so I, from my vantage point, um, we are, uh, leveraging those dollars with county dollars uh, that already exist through the sales tax to the benefit of this county asset, uh, which will, and, and I want to focus on, because we, we talk all about the Bengals and all about the team. But in the end, this asset, and we've all said it, we want it to be used for other things. And so these, um, these improvements that we're doing, uh, a lot of them are, are, are end of it, a lot of them are nuts and bolts improvements, and they will be to the benefit of anything that we bring into that facility. So I just wanted to be clear, I, I don't want people to get the impression that, you know, uh, that there was nothing in the House version of the budget, and so we're out. Somehow that means it's, it's done. It is not done. It is a process, and we've served in the legislature. Um, you know, it's not over till it's over. And when it's over, will be after conference committee meets, uh, and we all figure this out. So I just wanted to be clear on that point because I, I don't want people to get the impression that we've thrown up our hands and said, oh, oh, no, you know, that's, that's just not where we are. And, and I think it is important, I, I, Chris Ronan, I actually just reached out. I, I will continue to have conversations with Cuyahoga County to see if there is a way to partner. Um, but at the moment, um, you know, as I said, they're, they're just not in lockstep up there.
Commissioner, you had mentioned my-
Commissioner Summer Dumis-
Oh, go ahead. You mentioned my name, so I want to make sure I, I'll talk about that.
No, you, you go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Commissioner. I just wanted to make sure she knew I had something about this part.
I just wanted to indicate that the, uh, MOU is a major transition from our, from the current lease. And so I had a question for Tom, um, under Article Seven. And the last sub-Article, uh, seven point three, it indicates, uh, no impact on the lease. Nothing in this MOU is intended to, nor shall be deemed or construed to alter the terms of the lease or earlier MOUs. And I'm, uh, can you clarify that? Because, um, this MOU definitely alters what was in the lease before. So why, why are we putting-
So the key provisions here are that, so you have an existing lease. Um, and under that existing lease, the county has obligations with respect to the maintenance and operations, the capital repairs, and even the capital improvements of the stadium. Okay, that's under the existing lease. What is happening here under this MOU and what the county and the team have agreed to do, in the instance of the team, the team has agreed to undertake not less than a hundred and twenty million of capital improvements that are not set forth as a team obligation under the existing lease. So this MOU is saying they are moving forward and they are going to do that. And, and on the teams on the county side, we're saying, we're basically saying, we're taking care of sixty-five million in really what we consider as capital repairs associated with primarily the vertical transportation systems, the escalators, elevators, and so on, and those infrastructure-related items pertaining to the club lounges and club suites. So, so what this is, this is language that said, this is nothing in, in conflict with the existing lease.
I understand our obligations in the current lease.
Right.
But when you make that the last statement, in no way, in no way does it alter the terms of the lease.
Correct.
You need to add something else on there. This MOU will, if we agree on it, will, um, alter some things, but if we're obligated to do them, we will. But I think this is just too closed. It needs to be more open, in my opinion.
Right. Here, here's, let me just respond to that. You have the lease, and then we've had five amendments to that lease. I think we've had a total of six MOUs since twenty eighteen with the team that are all basically saying, we have a lease that's a base document. That isn't changing, but we have an MOU that says we're going to do certain things. So by way of example, when we put Wi-Fi in the stadium, read to that within the last three years, the team agreed to pay for a portion of that Wi-Fi. Again, that's not a responsibility of the team under the lease to do that, but they did it. So what I'm saying is the MOUs are additional documents in addition to that lease. So we don't-
Well, I don't, I'm just wondering, why are we going back? We have the lease, we're gonna fall, follow through on our obligations.
Right.
I don't understand the necessity of putting that part in.
Right, because the lease is still there. All of our amendments are still there. They do amend that.
So why do we need to say that in this new-
Because it's, it's a way of clarifying to make sure that we're, both the county and the team are saying, the lease is still here. We have five amendments that modified it. We have MOUs that are subsequent that provide additional things that both the county and team are going to do in addition to the MOU as modified by amendments. So it's just, it is a legal term to say that this is not in conflict with anything that's in the existing lease. That's all.
We'll talk later.
Okay. I'm happy to sit down and, and meet with you to go over that. And I would just say, just one comment real quickly, um, in terms of Commissioner Reese, your, your question about the team, as your counsel for almost three decades now, we would never come before you and say that the, the Cincinnati Bengals have agreed to every single term and condition as written and as presented to you has been approved by the team unless they did. And we've never come to the board with that kind of representation unless they did. So I'm just, I just wanted to clarify that for you that they have.
Well, thank you on that, but let me just say this. Um, we can't do it like we've been doing it. That's why we got the mess we got right now. We gotta, we, we need to do something totally different. I ain't been here three decades, so I can't really, uh, attest to three decades of your service. Uh, but what I'm saying is, when I see something like this and they got their name on it, sometimes you say they've already agreed, sometimes they would already have their signature and say, well, they have their signature. And now we know that because their lawyer's not here, uh, their representative is not here. And we're talking about taxpayer money. This is not a, uh, behind-the-scenes private business deal. We can't handle it like a private business deal because we have to be elected. And, uh, let me just say, Commissioner Dumis, uh, is on to something. Because when you put in here that this ain't got nothing to do with this lease, but then you come and say, this is gonna help us with the lease. It's either gonna help us with the lease or it ain't part of the lease. And I think her questions, and I'm not here to go into it because I'm looking for the other lawyers, but I think that she has some good questions, and I, I know you're gonna talk to her privately, and maybe you could let me know what the outcome is of it because I do think that's a, that language. Everything in this lease has covered them. They covered every, I mean, every nook and cranny. And so every little word is going to matter as we move forward. Because we said the thirty-nine million dollars. We had the same MOU and said, well, it doesn't affect this lease. But we were told that if we did this thirty-nine million dollar deal, and we had to move fast, the same words we saying now. We had to move fast, procurement's got to go. Uh, we want to get it done before the season. We held up to our end of bargain and said, this will help us get to a lease. Now, while I'm here, I've never said what somebody else is doing, but I want to be clear. To meet with the governor, when I was president, we had to have a vote for me to meet with him. And the commissioners met, we went over, y'all said you want to go with this sports betting. And I went there, but I told the governor in that meeting that if this sports betting thing don't work out, and it's also clear in all the papers, I said, do not give us the crumbs. We got to get our fair share, just like Cleveland. It's all over the news. You can Google it if you want to get it, and that's why I don't like behind-the-scenes meetings. I like transparent meetings because I don't do interpreters. I don't need nobody interpret what I'm saying and what I'm doing. I want it out in the open. But you can Google it, it says Reese wants the fair share, don't give Cleveland everything. And that's exactly what I told the governor, face to face, eyeball to eyeball. Now, there have been some other meetings. I'm no longer the president because presidency moves around, everybody gets a turn, and there have been other meetings. And there were meetings, I wasn't in a meeting with the Speaker of the House. I didn't have that. I hear there was a meeting on Monday. We, we delivered our package on Friday. I said, deliver it. It was supposed to be delivered a year ago. I got confirmation it was delivered, then they, then I, I heard through the grapevine. And then I asked Mr. Ludo, and he said, him and Commissioner Dreehouse had a meeting on Monday. What happened on Monday? I don't know. I don't know what happened in that meeting on Monday. I don't know what happened in the other meetings that's been going on. We don't get to meet and negotiate, all of us individually. And I'm not going with just recommendations because we went with Commissioner recommendations, and the taxpayers got screwed, and that's why they voted somebody out. So I want to be clear, I can speak for myself. I've always spoke for myself, myself. And we each have our own opinions, and it doesn't make this person's opinion wrong. My opinion matters to the two hundred and eighteen thousand people. Their opinion matters who vote for them. But when I speak up, I don't need to be challenged. I, yes, governor, it was televised, it was, uh, it was marketed, but I had to be voted. We had to go behind the scenes and vote, even though I was president, to vote to have a meeting. I ain't never voted for these, a whole lot of meetings that I happened to find out later, whole lot of one-off meetings. Oh, we met with, uh, Katie and Troy. Oh, we going to meet with Katie and Troy after the fact. I haven't gotten a transcript or a report, what was said in these meetings. I don't know why we delivered something on Friday and we meeting on Monday morning. Who does that in a negotiation? I've never heard of it. But I'm not challenging, I'm challenging where I'm coming from and what I've heard and what my people, citizens have told me. And these things got to be questioned because just like Commissioner Dumis read that one little line, that could change the game. We got to really know what it means. So that's where I'm coming from. If this thing ain't helping me get no lease, I ain't going with it. Because it's time for the lease now. We done played around for twenty years. We done had MOUs for twenty years. And if we can respect the NFL's deadline, we can spec, respect ours. So I'm not asking for a response from you. So, I'm not asking for a response from you as we get to talk to you. I'm just saying, we keep saying, this is what the Bengals want. I've never received anything from the Bengals ownership saying that this is what they want. I have not received anything from the Bengals ownership saying we going up to the State House together. But you went to the State House without us and you got a tax break with no sales tax. And then the sales tax fund is what's funding this. And now, we say we got the money, but we were just fighting in December to get thirty percent and we said the ta, the fund don't have the money for the homeowners. So, we just gotta, you know, this is a tough thing. It's gonna be a lot of questions. It's gonna be a lot of questions. It might get rough. It might get hot. Because this is a, this is a complicated thing. But hopefully, in the end, we can have a win-win. But I'm waiting on the lease and that's where my head is.
Right. And Commissioner Reese, if I could, because I don't want your point to be lost here, I think it's probably the most important point that has been emphasized here, in the meeting that happened with the governor last fall. And, and on behalf of the county, we presented a state gaming revenue proposal that will be truly transformative to how the states, the state can basically assist communities throughout Ohio to help fund stadiums for not less than twenty-three major and minor league professional teams, twenty-three all across the state. Hamilton County initiated that legislation. And actually, we proposed in that meeting, as, as you may recall, that there be a sixteen percent increase in the gaming tax. It, the, the whole point of that was to say, Hamilton County wasn't looking to take any money out of the general revenue, revenue fund. Hamilton County was not looking to take anything out of education, mental health, or anything else from the taxpayers of, of Ohio. What we said was, we have vendors that are coming in from, from out-of-state. They have no investment in the state of Ohio and yet, they derive revenue that is in the billions of dollars, billions of dollars. And right now, the, the Department of Education gets about a hundred and fifty million a year from that fund. And what the governor recognized in that meeting, that if we do this, we're gonna bring in somewhere between a hundred and eighty million to two-hundred million dollars a year, not from the general revenue fund, but from, from the vendors that are profiting very healthily from what happens in Ohio. So, we proposed a sixteen percent increase. The governor took what Hamilton County initiated and said, you know what? That's a great idea, as, as Commissioner Drehouse said, a brilliant idea. And we're gonna put that in the budget, except he said twenty percent so that we can raise even more money. And he also modified it in that time period that we met with him last fall. He said, I wanna make sure we can fund interscholastic sports in K through twelve. A nice, a nice provision. And by the way, everything in education is sacrosanct. We are not touching education dollars. That is significant. That was, that was initiated right here in southwest Ohio at a meeting that all the Commissioners agreed should happen and you were President of the Board at the time. So, that is significant. And right now, even though, even though the, the House, by a narrow vote, basically on, on party lines, voted to take the governor's proposal out of the budget, just this morning, uh, State Senator Serino is now saying he thinks the governor's budget should come back, governor, governor's budget proposal should come back in. That is huge because we're on the right side of history here, on the right side of history that says, we're not doing this one-off stuff with one stadium at a time, one county at a time, one owner at a time. We're doing that, something that solves major league, minor league, all across the state. Every single state legislator should be saying, this helps our communities. It's not every-year annual capital ask. It is something that's sustainable. Over thirty years, it's almost six billion dollars. That's unheard of. And it started with this board. Give yourself credit for what you guys did. I mean, it's, it's great. And we're there, we're gonna, we're there. And two out of the three know, having been in the state legislator, how, how legislature, how to move things through. And I would just say, President Drehouse, you can speak to where we are in the process. We're not done, right? It's gone to the House, now it's to the Senate. Let's see, we're, um, Senator Blessing has asked for a hearing on Senate Bill one-fifty that basically is the proposal we submitted, um, to the governor last fall, uh, with the Senate Finance Committee. I think we're gonna get that hearing. So, we're-
Yes. You're, you're emphasizing the point that it's a process, we're not there yet. Things are moving quickly at the state, though. So, I, let me make a recommendation here, um, because I, I don't want anyone, and we're all trying to catch up all the time on what's happening. Uh, so maybe it, we need to schedule more regular executive sessions to talk about this, or public sections, sessions to talk about this. Um, I don't want anyone to feel like they are behind the curve when it comes to information, um, even though I think we all feel that sometimes when it comes to, um, what's going on at the state. But let's do that, Jeff, if you don't mind, on, uh, on a regular basis so it's predictable and we, um, you know, when we're going to have a conversation related to an update on the Bengals, whether it is, or the team, or the, the, the facility, um, whether it is related to the state or what's going on with the, uh, National Consultant, I think that would be helpful, uh, for us to do just as a matter of course. So, let's try to figure out what the pantameter is in collaboration with all three of us. I was simply trying to point out that this process is challenging also because the three of us can't all be in the same room at the same time, um, and, and it's challenging. And so, when President Reese was in the room, we were talking to the governor, uh, I'm in the room, we were talking to the speaker. So, it, it is, it's difficult because it's not the same people all the time. And it's not the same people on the other end either. So, it's, it's, it's made overly complicated. So, but I think, uh, more regular conversations about it might be useful. So, let's, let's go ahead and, and do that. Put something on the calendar.
Public, too. I had asked for, I mean, a year ago, to say, let's get a calendar that we can, because the public felt they were left out this last, and I don't wanna think we behind the curtains doing anything.